We'll call the auditor and with that we'll take a roll call.
Mr. Hillsinger?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Yeah.
Mr. Sneed?
Here.
Mr. Elliott?
Here.
And Mr. Ballard. Mr. Ballard, you appear to be muted.
Here.
Okay.
Okay, we've got five then. Do we have a status sheet?
No, there's no status sheet today.
Okay, no committee reports?
I think we do have minutes from July 11th.
Okay, we need a motion to accept the minutes from July 11th.
Make a motion to accept the minutes is.
Second a motion. Discussion? Seeing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it five zero. And then we'll go on to new business consideration. From petitions from public hearing versus, and the only one is PC 20-22 Zoological Sub-District of the Metropolitan Zoo.
Good afternoon, PC 20-22 Zoological Sub-District of the Metropolitan Zoo is requesting a change in zoning from R3 to PS Park and Scenic for 3.72 acres located on the west side of Columbia Bottom Road, north of Laramore Road, and south of Stottman Road. As you can recall, this site is located in Spanish Lake, and the four parcels that are up for this petition are surrounded by the new Wild Care Park by the St. Louis Zoo. So this is coming before the commission today as a letter of recommendation. We are recommending approval as the request is a logical extension of the Park and Scenic District. The request is keeping with the goals of the Spanish Lake Community Area Study, specifically creating exceptional recreational opportunities to attract visitors to Spanish Lake.
I'll make a motion for approval.
We have a second? Discussion, anyone?
Wayne, I drove by there the other day and they started grading around those houses. And it's not much down there, so it's, it looked like it's going to be a pretty good choice that they've done. So that's why I recommend that, go ahead and do it.
Yeah, they, they got some nice PR last week on it. So, okay, anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it five zero. And we'll go on to letters for approval. First is PC 08-22 and 09-22 Quick Trip, Butler Hill and Lehme Fairing.
Would you like to do these individually, Mr. Hillsinger, or all the letters together?
Um. Are there any changes from what we discussed last week?
Um, there is a minor change with PC 1321. Um, so if you'd like to do them individually, we can overview that minor change. So.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say with, but PC 08 and 0922 is consistent with the commission's action. On July 11th, we did take out the condition about the pervious pavement as, as indicated, as requested by the commission.
Okay. Anything else on that one?
Not for me.
Okay. Uh, with that, can we have a motion for 08, 22, and 09, 22?
I'll make a motion for approval. Bill?
Second a motion.
Discussion? Seeing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it five zero. Um, 17 and 18-22 Our Lady's Inn.
This letter is consistent with the commission's recommendation of approval from July 11th.
Okay, no changes?
No changes.
Okay, with that, we need a motion.
Make a motion for approval.
I'll second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it five zero. And then, uh, the last item, PC 13-21 South County Chrysler Jeep Ram.
So subsequent to the commission's recommendation of approval for the information report for this petition, the petitioner did reach out about one of the conditions of development from MoDOT requesting slash requiring that one of the curb cuts be closed. Um, we did have a meeting with planning staff, MoDOT, and the petitioner to talk about the southern curb cut. And what we, uh, the agreement we came to was that it would be, um, it would be reasonable for it to be an entrance only at the southern curb cut. Uh, and that the, you know, it could be utilized as an emergency exit, but it would be reconfigured to be an entrance only at the southern of the two curb cuts. So the, the northern curb cut is, is the one that sort of leads you naturally to the circulation of utilizing the car wash. Um, but then that southern curb cut would be an entrance only. So we did make that change in the conditions, um, but that is the only change.
Okay. Um, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion for approval.
Second a motion.
Discussion, anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it five zero. And I think we've already done 20-22.
Correct.
So we'll go on to, uh, correspondence. And the first item is PC 84-01 KM Properties.
So this is a C8 development at Telegraph and Herb. The commission will recall that at the July 11th meeting, uh, staff brought this to you with the recommendation of approval, the request being to increase the limit on the number of restaurants in the C8 and to adjust the, um, parking reduction that's been granted. The commission did indicate that they, uh, were not in favor of the request, so we have prepared a, a recommendation of denial for the commission. But subsequent to the meeting, we did receive some additional information from the petitioner, including the parking count. The parking count that's on your screen right now, as well as photos of the parking lot and, um, a letters, a letter from the owner of Nubbies as well, talking a little bit more about his business. Um, and as you can see in this parking count, the, the petitioner has conducted a study that shows that there is, um, usually at least 20% of the, roughly 20% of the space is open on the parking lot. And they do note that while some of these, the open spaces aren't typically, excuse me, aren't typically open right in front of the businesses, sometimes they are, um, the spaces in the back of the lot or the side of the lot. Um, but they, they've shown this count that, um, they maintain indicates there is enough parking on the site. Um, so the commission can forward the letter of denial that we've drafted, or the commission can reconsider the request based on this new information.
Okay.
Uh. Before we vote on that?
Go ahead, Bill.
Uh, I, I would like to just, uh, ask a few questions regarding the information that was passed along to us um, by the petitioner. Uh, actually, I have a question, Jacob. Uh, maybe I'm just reading it incorrectly, but the last sentence of the first paragraph says, "The commission maintained that the site is underparked." Uh, does underpark mean that there's not enough?
Not enough. Yes, not enough.
Not enough?
Yes.
I read that, uh, fact.
If it was, yeah, we would do it overparked if there was, if there was too much parking, it would be overparked. And it's under, if it's underparked, that means there's not enough.
That's fine. Oh. The. If I look at the, uh, the letter, uh, from, uh, the petitioner. Uh, let's see. There's, there's a few things, uh, maybe we can get a little more clarification on. Uh. It says the planning staff made a recommendation, recommended change to the ordinance that the petitioner did not request. Uh, can, uh, Jacob, can, can you fill us in on what that recommendation was?
Yeah, so they, when, when this came to the commission two weeks ago, um, you know, staff, when we looked at it, we, we looked at the, the zoning ordinance, we looked at, um, you know, the, the site, um, from, from photography. Um, and at the time, we, we thought that it was appropriate for the commission to consider the full 20% reduction. Um, the petitioner is requesting 17%. Um, we thought it was reasonable to, to grant the 20, which is where we came up with our, um, with our recommendation. Um, and again, I, I think procedurally, we have in front of you, um, a document that's consistent with your decision from two weeks ago. Um, subsequently, the, um, petitioner, um, provided additional information for, for your all's consumption, uh, this evening. Um, but yes, we, so they did their, their, um, letter from two weeks ago, I think, and Mel, correct me, I think it was 17% is what they were asking for two weeks ago, and we recommended 20. Um, we found 20 was, was, was reasonable, um, and was pretty cool, you know, we thought it was, um, again, we thought it was reasonable.
Okay.
And then the other half is that what the petitioner asked for was for the, the limitation on restaurants over 1,500 square feet to be increased from one to three, whereas the department's recommendation was to remove that limitation entirely.
And our, and our rationale behind that was just, um, because we've, we've chatted with enforcement staff in the Department of Transportation, Public Works, um, and they had some, they had some difficulties interpreting the ordinance as written from 2001. So we thought it would be beneficial to, for the enforcement of the ordinance to remove that stipulation. Um, but if it's not the, you know, if it's not the, um, desire of the commission to make that recommendation, um, we would just be working with code enforcement more closely on this site, um, to, to work with them in the future, um, if they had questions about enforcing the ordinance.
Okay. Um. We, uh. Let's see. The statement here is, uh, by the petitioner is to, uh, the current use, that their, their request is, uh, consistent with the current uses and supports our request to change ordinance and to approve only the restaurants and a number of restaurant seats that are currently on-site. Uh. Can, um, can we address the issue about, uh, the, we know what restaurants are there? Um. But let's talk about the seats. Uh, the Mexican restaurant is the 3,600 square foot restaurant, is that correct?
Mel, is that the accu, is that accurate?
Let me make sure I've got the, um, the right document up.
Well, that's the big one in there.
Um, I think it actually might be the 4,800 square foot. But I want to just.
That's.
Pull his table.
Yeah, I was a little confused which one was what, but, uh.
Do you want me to stop sharing, Mel, so you can pull the, that table up here, or?
No.
Oh, I found it. The Los Cuantos is the 4,800 square foot restaurant.
Okay, the 4,800 is.
Would be, be 36.
Okay, so, um. So basically, they have currently 150 seats, according to this.
Correct. The Los Cuantos Mexican restaurant.
The newer restaurant, which is the barbecue restaurant, uh, is currently 3,600 square feet?
So the portion that they exist in now is 2,400 square feet, which has their seating, that's 72 seats, and the sort of, um, the expansion they want to do, which would, uh, if they expanded, the Nubbies would cover 3,600 square feet. They want to add 1,200 square feet. But the Nubbies that's open right now.
Okay, the 1,200's in that number. Um, and then the other 1,680 is the, uh, ice cream.
Yes.
Yeah, Rich's.
The freestanding, um, custard store.
Okay, so, um. If I was to take a look at, or I did take a look at, uh, the current. So currently, they're approved for 150. In the one restaurant, they're approved for 70, they're not approved for 72. In, in the barbecue restaurant, is that correct?
I, my understanding is that the 72 seats exist in the 2,400 square feet of Nubbies that is open today. The area they want to expand into would not have any other seating in it.
Okay. Um. So. And, and then there, there is 32 exterior seating at Rich's. Okay. Point I'm trying, trying to get to here, trying to understand at first, but it's, we're talking about 254 seats in total. The original ordinance only allowed one restaurant at 15, no, no greater than 1,500 square feet. Is that right?
That's correct. That's what, what the amendment in 2007 added, the stipulation that there shall be no more than one restaurant over 1,500 square feet.
So from day one, this, this, this development was probably, uh, non-conforming.
The issue in, yes, one of the issues in the 2007 amendment was that Rich's also existed at over 1,500 square feet and was not, um, taken into account.
Okay. Um. It seems to me that when knowing that information, uh. And now going to the current request, uh. In the letter of, uh, from Nubbies, uh, the gentleman says, "To be clear, the space next door will be used for nothing but prep." Okay? No more seating. A carryout counter and a small office. And then he goes on to say a little later, uh, that this would really work out well because, uh, setting up space, uh, for to-go counter in Nubbies, instead of waiting on in a dining room, uh, it would also free up some parking spots, uh, during business hours. But we all have to understand whether you're sitting indoors or outdoors, or whether you're out of your car and going to pick it up in a hurry, you need a parking spot. And that's where I think I mentioned, uh, at the last meeting, that they park in a fire lane all along the curb, which is illegal. And that's what they're counting on doing right now, based on what Nubby says in his own, uh, letter. What they're, they're just parked, rush in, grab it, and out the door. I still think personally that that's not a good planning exercise for this commission. Uh, and I, I'll only address the fact that if, if I was looking at the pictures they sent and the video, I, I don't feel that it's necessarily relative because those restaurants don't get busy till 7:30, 8 o'clock. Not 6:00. Uh. From there, from the pictures, I would say, "Got, you've got enough parking." In reality, I think that there's not enough parking, and I would hope that we could get uh, planning staff to do their, to do, uh, a, a study of it. Uh. Instead of the petitioner providing that information to us. So that's my.
Mister did indicate that, that he would be willing to do more parking counts if that's something the commission wanted. Um, I imagine he would be willing to do them at a later hour, um, as well, if that was the data, that, the, the time period that the commission wanted to see data regarding.
And definitely how their parking by the curb in the fire lane.
I'm sure he'd be willing to address that as well.
If the commission, uh, agrees with some of the comments I, I've made, then I would like to make a motion to put it on hold to sort out, this is an issue of parking. And parking does relate to the number of seats, but it also relates to anyone sitting indoors or outdoors and anyone stopping to pick something up in an authorized parking spot.
Bill, if you make a motion for a hold, I would second it, based on what you presented.
Thank you. I'll make a motion for a hold.
I second the motion. We have a first and second, any other comments from anyone? Seeing none, uh, we have a hold?
I hear Jacob in the hallway, but I don't.
Oh, no, I apologize. I said, so for two weeks from now, staff will, um, work with the petitioner to address additional, um, to get additional information regarding, um, these, their use over, at, at a later in the evening, perhaps, um, on a Friday evening, uh, take a look at closer to 7:30, 8:00 PM, see how the situation, uh, at the site is doing, um, and, and come to, before the commission with additional information at that time, um, looking later into the evening.
Okay.
And I, I'd like to speak for myself, but certainly I think the commission, in that we, we want to work with these businesses, we always work with the businesses. But I think in this case, we need the right information to, to make the right decision.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion for a hold, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it five zero. And then we've got, uh, next item, PC 22-22 Sales County Planning Commission, and PC 23-22 Paradise Land Development. Some request to withdraw.
Good afternoon. Yes, this was a request for a change in zoning from R1 and FPR1 to NU and FPNU and a PEU in the R1 and the FPR1. Um, and the petitioner has requested a withdrawal without prejudice. Um, as you can see, the site is, uh, in kind of southwestern county. Um, the petition was held prior to public hearing, um, and the petitioner has, uh, since, uh, submitted correspondence indicating that they no longer have the property under a purchase contract and thus are no longer purs, pursuing the project. Um, so the department is recommending approval of the withdrawal without prejudice.
Okay. Um, we need a motion?
Make a motion for withdrawal.
Second a motion.
Discussion, anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it five zero, and we've got one site plan, 19 and 20-21 McBride Bearley and Company.
Uh, good afternoon, commissioners, uh, before you is PC 19 and, and 20-21 McBride Bearley and Company, LZ. Uh, as you recall, this is, was a request for changes zoning from NU to R3 with the PEU in the R3 for a 41.43 acre tract located at the southwest quadrant of New Halls Ferry Road and Shackelford Road. And you can see, uh, from the, um, context map, uh, this is in, in far north county, and the parcel is, um, outlined in black. Um, I would note that it's only the, the parcel on the, the west side of, uh, New Halls Ferry, um, not the, not the one on the east. Sorry about that. Uh, and then you can see, uh, from this area, also more context of the, the residential developments surrounding this site. Uh, so this is the preliminary plat, uh, there's, uh, they're proposing 159 lots in total, uh, with six detention basins. Um, throughout the, the development, those are largely concentrated through the, the middle of the site, uh, within the common ground. Uh, they're proposing two entrances, one, uh, from Shackelford Road and one from New Halls Ferry Road. And then also outlined by the, the blue box is a centralized mail kiosk, um, which is the preferred method, um, for, for new developments, um, from the, the postal service. Uh, this view, uh, provides a little bit more detail. Um, you can see the, the entrance from Shackelford Road, um, indicated by the arrow, and then the green circles, um, are showing the locations of detention basins that are, um, within this view of the, the proposal. And then this view, uh, moves a little, a little bit further north. You can see the entrance proposed from New Halls Ferry Road, um, as well as the, uh, mail kiosk, uh, towards the, the bottom of the, the planned view, and then the detention basins, again circled in green. And then this view is the, the rear of the site, uh, providing, uh, more detail. Uh, the, these images are of the landscape plan. The, the top left image, um, shows the access from New Halls Ferry Road and the, the dense, uh, landscaping along the, the perimeter of the development, both in the common ground along New Halls Ferry, and then as well as at the rear of the lots, um, along the northern boundary of the, the development. Uh, the bottom image depicts the access from Shackelford Road. You can see similar, uh, dense landscaping in the common ground along Shackelford Road. And the circles on each lot towards, uh, the front of each lot, I guess, uh, adjacent to the proposed roads, um, indicate lot trees. So there's a, a minimum of one tree per lot, and there's an average of, an average across the development of two trees per lot. And then the, the top right photo, uh, is depicting, uh, the intersection of Shackelford Road and New Halls Ferry. Uh, that is entirely common ground, and you can see the hatchet areas, um, along, uh, the, the right-of-way as well as in the detention basin, basins, those are, um, proposed to be planted with Missouri native grasses. The existing gravel road is, is being removed, um, and will be restored to a natural state. Uh, the left image is the planting schedule. As you can see, they're proposing entirely Missouri native plantings. And then the right has a, uh, an image of what they're proposing, the monument sign, to look like there will be one at, at each entrance. So at this time, I'd ask for a motion for approval of the preliminary plat.
I'll make a motion for approval, but Paul, I have a question, Wayne.
Let's get a second, then we'll go to questions. Do we have a second, anyone?
Sure. I'll second.
Okay, Bill, go ahead.
Oh, could you put those, uh, uh, the chart with the three different configurations on it back up? Next one, that one there. Now, that, uh, you said you have detention bases. Now, where are the detention bases related to? I guess, uh, this little circle in the middle here, that's not the retention base, that's something else there, right?
Um, so.
The second chart, on the second chart down there.
The one on the bottom?
On the bottom, yes.
Yeah, so where the, if you can see the cursor, that is a, a proposed detention basin. Um, so that's running through the common ground that, that generally follows, um, a Blue Line Creek that runs through the middle of the, the development. So there's a, a 25-foot no disturb buffer off the, the top of bank of the creek. Um, and so all of that is, is common ground. Those will be detention basins, um, they're proposed to be planted with, um, Missouri native grasses.
So, so you got a detention ba, you got a detention, uh, place, and then you've got the creek running through there also?
Uh, so the, the creek is actually outside of the detention basins. So it's, it, the cursor's kind of following the, the line of the creek. Um, so the, the detention basins are, are along the banks, the, the top of the banks of the creek.
Okay, so you don't think it's gonna be a problem?
And the, the creek and the basins are both in common ground.
Okay, so how far are the houses from those?
So there's, there's a 25-foot no disturb buffer from the, um, the top of, top of bank for the creek. And then there's an additional 25-foot no build buffer, so they would be at, at a minimum, any house would be at a minimum 50 feet from the creek.
Okay, seem like that yard number 67 a lot, I can't hardly read that, 47 or 67 on the top chart. Seems like it's running down there pretty close, and so is 66, I guess.
So the, the, they, they do run up right against the 25-foot no disturb in some places. Uh, but they, they do meet the requirement of, of, uh, of not doing any disturbance or grading within the, that 25-foot buffer from the top of bank. And then, um, there's an additional, beyond that 25 feet, there's another 25 feet where they wouldn't be able to, to build anything.
Have you, did you look at this personally, walk down there, look at that?
Um, I, I did not visit this site when, um, it was scheduled for, for public hearing, no.
So who, who did this? Did anybody from the planning department do it?
I believe, I believe Mel.
I did go out, um, I did go to the site, I didn't go down, um, towards the creek area. Is your question more about the?
Yeah, I was just, just wondering if, if somebody took a look, a real hard look at it. Because a lot of times we get, uh, things presented to us from the, from the guys, uh, the, the petitioners, and it ain't what it's supposed to be, or what they told us it was going to be, it's always something different. I think, uh, some of the, uh, commissioners would probably agree with that, some may not, but that's some of the experiences I've seen with the stuff that we're getting thrown before us. But anyway, I'll, I'll go ahead and, uh, uh, make the motion to approve it.
Is that, um, MSD also has, has reviewed this site plan, um, and I do think they have a couple more things to work out with MSD, but it would not change the layout of these basins or, or the lots.
Yeah, I'm worried about the people after they get in there, then they start having problems, then, uh, McBride walk away from it.
The other thing I wanted to add is that the lots themselves also have a rear yard structure setback, even if they aren't, you know, if the, if the, the no disturb and the structure setback from the creek, um, didn't reach them, they do have a structure setback on the lot itself.
Okay, all right.
Hey, we have a first and second, anyone else have anything to, that I could bring up? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, I have it five zero. Jacob, anything good?
So the only thing I wanted to, uh, inform the commission about is the Manchester annexation, give you guys an, an update on that, so the public participation phase of the annexation request has, uh, come to a close. The county did provide, uh, a significant, in this department, you know, we wrote the report for the county, um, regarding our analysis of the plan of intent, um, by the city of Manchester, the county is strongly opposed, um, to the request. Um, and I just wanted to give you guys an update, um, the, the boundary commission has until, um, late February to make a decision as to whether to approve or disapprove, uh, the annexation request. If they disapprove it, it's deemed denied, um, and if they do approve it, it would ultimately go to a vote of, uh, the residents of the city of Manchester, as well as the residents of the unincorporated annexation area. Um, and both of those groups of individuals would have to vote in favor of it at a subsequent election, so I just wanted to keep you guys updated on what was going on there.
Okay, appreciate that, thank you.
Jacob, I've got a question for you about that, how, how many people attended that residence?
That, attended that public hearing, or?
Yes.
Oh, there were, oh gosh, I don't know, maybe, maybe a hundred residents, there were a lot of, of representatives from the city of Manchester that sort of filled a lot of the room. Um, uh, there may not have even been a hundred residents, uh, in attendance at the public hearing, which occurred back at the end of June.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, question for you, Jake, did they, uh, did they, uh, respond positive or negative either way?
Oh, the residents?
Yeah.
Uh, here's what I would say, my, and my, and, and you can, the, the public hearing is online if you wanted to sort of watch it yourself, but my sort of takeaway is, from it is that a lot of the people who spoke in favor of the annexation were residents of the city of Manchester already, so they were already folks that live in Manchester who came to the public hearing and, and were in support of it for, because my interpretation, well, that's my interpretation of, of how and why they got there is not critical. Um, but of residents who are unincorporated, I would say it was mixed, but I'd say it leaned toward, uh, concern and skepticism on the unincorporated residents, um, you know, part, in large part because at the end of the day, um, being incorporated into the city of Manchester is going to lead to, uh, a significant increase in, in sales tax proper, and, and as well as property tax. And businesses in the city of Manchester will be subject to, um, a merchant license fee, which you're not subject to as a, as an unincorporated business. Um, so there's a, there's a lot of, uh, additional, uh, extraction of wealth that the city of Manchester would, would be doing to provide substantially the exact same services that the county provides, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Jacob, Jacob?
Yes.
One, one more question, uh, what's the status of, uh, the Motor Mark, uh?
Moto petition, so that has been, that has been submitted to, uh, the county council, and it has been referred to the, to the P I C, I don't, there has not yet been a date that's been set for the P I C meeting on that.
But did we, did we see the final draft of, uh, the letter that's supposed to go there? I, I, at least I didn't see it.
So, the, the letter that was attached to the July eleventh agenda is the letter that went.
But, but it was going to be changed. We talked about, uh, putting a, a statement in there about, uh, uh, the encampment down at the, uh, I think that was Wayne's, uh, uh, suggestion. And then the, uh, other issue was, um, uh, the objection of having something visible from the Illinois side coming across as the, and, and we mentioned the, uh, uh, the, the one that's on two seventy.
So Chairman, Chairman Hilsinger and I did have a conversation about that site up in North County, that's actually in the city of St. Louis, it's not in St., it's not in unincorporated St. Louis County. Um, so that was never the jurisdiction of St. Louis County to, um, to approve that, to approve that.
That, and, and I understand that it's in the city, uh, what, what is the county's objection?
I have, at this point, I haven't, at this point, this, this petition is, my opinion of it is, is, I, I, is no longer really relevant. Um, you know, really all I'm doing at this point is functioning to provide the county council with the views of the, of the planning commission, that, that is how I, I see myself at this point, we, we gave you our best, um, professional, uh, advice on it. Um, but at that, at beyond that, um, you know, we operate to ensure that the county council hears the, the voice of the commission.
So the planning commission, I think that we should have seen the letter before it went to the county councils, because there were two issues that was not responded to, to the, uh, to the, uh, planning commission before it was sent. Is that true? I mean.
I, I don't, no, I, I, you know, at this point, uh, commissioners need, um, this is an issue that's been in front of the commission for multiple meetings and has been reviewed by the commission multiple times. It is not the intent of staff to send something that is to the county council, um, that does not fully reflect the views. I was under the impression and understanding that the letter, as we submitted, was an accurate reflection of the commission's, of the commission's views, and additionally, when I, when I looked back and saw that the Moto Mart, um, was in the city of St. Louis and was not in St. Louis County. Uh, I did have a discussion with, uh, Mr. Hilsinger to ensure that, um, that he found that it was acceptable for us to submit the letter without adding that in, because it's not in our jurisdiction, it would never would have been in our, you know, we don't take into account what the city of St. Louis has done. Um, that, that, you know, what they have done does, is not.
Wasn't a reason what we wanted it, but that's all.
I think that Bill is getting at the encampment, was that mentioned in the letter? Because we did talk about that quite a bit.
I recall the conversation where Mr. Hilsinger, I, and I think, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, Mr. Hilsinger, I think that you had mentioned that this was the first time you'd been, been advised not to visit the site, but my understanding was not that that was something that we wanted added to the letter, so.
That's not my, I, that's also not my recollection either, because at this point, commissioners, I, it is, this department was really ready to ensure that we had this right, and that we were accurately reflecting what it was that the desire of the commission. Um, it, it is not the recollection, I think, of anyone in this department that that was what you wanted added, we did have a line in there that said that there was, um, increased activity, um, reduces crime, so that was already, that idea was already in your letter.
Okay, Wayne?
Yeah.
I understood you to say that that should be included.
I suppose at this point, we could go back to the video.
Yeah. I brought it up, but I don't recollect recommending that it be included. But I, I think the, uh, easy solution here, Jacob, in the, in the future, is that the commission looks at any letters prior to them being forwarded on to.
That.
Counselor, whoever. And give the commissioners a, a, a chance to say yea, nay, or add what they want.
I, I suppose I'm confused in some ways, because that is, every letter that we, that has been discussed by this commission is that that is your letter, so we were ensuring that we had reflected the, the comments that the commission had.
I think what's being brought up is that the commission didn't see the final draft. And had they seen the final draft in these items, could have been addressed at that time, not after the fact. And right now it's a little late to, uh, address them, since the letter's already been sent. I mean, we weren't under any kind of, uh, sense of urgency here, were we?
I think our understanding was that we were adding the minor revision that the commission had asked for with the assumption it was going to go after we made that minor revision.
That is the understanding that I was, that I was existing under.
I mean, there was no, what I'm asking is, was there a, a reason to rush the letter to the council that the commission couldn't have seen it first?
What, you know, to be really honest, I, I'm wondering whether this may be a, a, a committee of the whole discussion to be had by the commission. Um, at this point, the, the letter had been reviewed by the commission multiple times. The staff was moving the, the, these letters, you, we want to ensure that we are, um, treating petitioners and moving their petitions forward, um, in a, you know, mindful of timelines, and that we knew that this was going to be held up at, at council anyway. Um, so. I, 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 I'm, I have to admit that I, I'm somewhat confused about the conversation, because we brought this to you multiple times. Um, we only sent it off after we believed that we had accurately reflected, um, the commission's will, and it, was there a rush? Well, every petition is a, um, every time that we can reduce the amount of time that it's going through the rezoning processes, is to help petitioners and property owners, um, you know, exercise their personal property rights, um, is something that we, that we take seriously.
Anyone else, anything to add?
Wayne, this is Keith here.
Yeah, Keith.
Uh, I guess, this, this is another reason why maybe we should get back into person for our meetings. Uh, rather than the WebEx, so we can be there, touch these letters, look at them when they're supposed to be there, talk about them as a group, and yeah, we're talking as a group, but it's not like sitting down in, in person. It's just my opinion.
I agree with.
I agree with it too.
Where are we in terms of, uh, in-person meetings?
So the county council chambers are closed until September, so that was, which was corresponding with the time that the last time we had this conversation, which was to move to in-person after Labor Day.
Okay. Any thoughts on that, commissioners?
Uh, thank you.
Would we go, would we go back to the typical, um, um, timeframes and that?
So I think we would pre.
We would have six o'clock, we would have six o'clock, um.
Monday.
First Mondays for executive meetings.
Mel, let me answer, let me answer that, so at this point, the commission can determine any calendar that it would like to, the, how it would like its calendar set. So if it is the, if the commission would like to set its calen-, change the, its calendar setting, all you need to do is let us know.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, with nothing else, um, we need a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved. Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it five zero, and we're adjourned. Till when, what's the next?
August the eighth, so I believe Evelyn already sent the notification, um, for August eighth, there'll be a six P M. executive meeting and a seven P M. public hearing on the eighth, still via WebEx.
All right, we'll see everybody on the eighth, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.